Good afternoon, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. And that is our regular meeting on the date of June 12th here at the Santa Maria Cornell Road Office. Live simultaneous Spanish translation of the board meeting is available for those viewing online. And I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I like allegiance to the God of the United States of America. And to everybody who stands on my nation under God, in the resolve of the good will to meet and justice for all.
Thank you, Anna. We'll call.
Okay, Mrs. Alvarez Flores.
Here.
Dr. Armistead. Mrs. Cardy.
Here.
Ms. Erman.
Here.
Mrs. Frost.
Here.
Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Walker. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Board comments. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to? Say? Okay.
I was trying. You saw. Yeah, I was really trying. Oh, it keeps going off and on. No? Okay. Um, I was just saying that I really appreciated the tour of the Juvenile Justice Center. I learned a lot. I was especially moved by the care of the staff. I really appreciated how it was organized, how thoughtful that was, all the services. It's almost like, once they're there, they just know they're there. They're not getting into why or whatever. And it's like, okay, how can we do care? How can we prepare them the best we can for when they leave? So was just, I'm still thinking a lot about it.
Sarah.
I just wanted to pass along the obvious congratulations for graduation promotions for classes of 2025.
Thank you.
On that same note, I was just going to share, I was fortunate enough to, uh, to drive down to Cal Lutheran and watch the graduation of the 19 residents, teacher residence candidates that are now employed at the San Maria Benito School District, but who went through our pathway program. And they're all bilingual candidates and ready to take it on. In fact, I had to tell a few of them, "Take a day, take a day," because they're so anxious to get into their classrooms. But wonderful ceremony and congratulations to all who have entered that profession.
Yes, very hard to believe that here we are at the end of the school year and we have to acknowledge the hard work students have put in and the passages. Graduation and achievements and, and everything that's commensurate with their experience in our public schools. I was able to attend the Carpinteria High School class of 25 awards and present some scholarships to some of those hardworking students. And over $500,000 in scholarships were allocated to these students. Eighty-five of them received the Golden State Seal of Merit. So I was really proud of that very small graduating class.
That's good.
And our Carpenter Middle School as well was able to bestow some students with special awards. Also wanted to let everyone know that the philanthropic community, which I represent as well, we have put together an education affinity group. And it's a way to kind of address the news as we receive it and the activities of the federal government, how that impacts public schools, and what might the philanthropic response be. So I'll bring back to you anything pertinent, but in the meantime, just know that that sector is definitely looking out for our public schools and interested in helping to safeguard and shore them up. And I see we have one public comment, Mr. Victor McConnell. I'd like to invite you up. You have about five minutes, Mr. McConnell.
Right. Good afternoon. My name is Victor McConnell, and I'd like to share two specific situations that I've weighed heavily on. One I've spoken about last time and one that I thought was still alive. First, on the switch procurement I brought up last time. For a public agency and expenditures of this size, nearly $100,000, there are established transparent pathways to ensure fiscal responsibility. One is through a formal competitive bidding process involving requests for proposals and documented bid evaluations. Another is the use of a cooperative purchase agreement, which leverages a competitively prebid contract under Public Contract Code 10298. However, for this specific $100,000 switch purchase, the documentation provided by SBCEO through responses to public records act requests appear to show that neither of these two pathways were followed. In April of this year, a request was sent asking for documentation between 2022 through 2025 in all records regarding IT-related projects exceeding $15,000. Specifically, the request asked for copies of all requests for proposals, requests for quotes, bid solicitations, bid evaluations, selection criteria, justification documents for vendor contract awards, and records of competing vendors if applicable. Yet SBCEO's own legal counsel stated that SBCEO does not have records responsive to this request. This $100,000 switch project was initiated in 2024. Also requested was any project proposals, needs assessments, or justifications for the switch deployment. What was provided was an email from the IT manager dated November 20th, 2024, in which they described what was done as quote-unquote due diligence, where they simply asked the IT vendor, the external IT vendor, to find comparable switches. This approach is concerning as it suggests that the responsibility for researching and recommending equipment was handed to the very vendor that would directly profit from selling, installing, and supporting the same equipment. It is also important to note that internal staff with documented networking expertise and a daily presence at the locations in which these were installed were never asked for input or brief prior to the procurement. And in fact, the installation was just carried out by the vendor on a public holiday, and the techs were informed just one business day prior. For an organization responsible for over $150 million in public funds, the apparent lack of formal project plan, the outsourcing of due diligence to a vendor with a financial stake, and the stated absence of standard competitive bidding records are all noteworthy. Second, I'd like to share an experience regarding my participation in internal safety meetings. For six months, I was an active participant in these meetings, invited by our safety liaison, and I contributed ideas and solutions aimed at enhancing site safety. My input included perspectives on emergency preparedness and evacuations, where my experience as someone with different abilities was, I believe, an asset to these discussions. At the same time, however, I had been engaged on one-on-one discussions with an associate superintendent. I initiated, uh, I initiated these meetings to document my concerns about the organization's potential exposure regarding compliance and other legal responsibilities. I felt it was my duty to bring these matters forward to protect the organization. These concerns eventually formed part of a formal HR complaint, which in an amendment included naming the same associate superintendent due to their oversight role relevant to my documented concerns. Then, just one business day after I named this associate superintendent in my amended HR complaint, I was informed by that same associate superintendent that my continued participation in those meetings was no longer assured and would require new justification. This occurred despite my consistent participation and contributions over six months, and despite the associate superintendent having been present in those meetings with me the entire time, exchanging follow-up communications from time to time without issue. Both these incidences, one involving procurement practices that appear to lack transparency and due diligence, and the other involving what I believe to be a direct reaction to my documented concerns, reflect a deeper issue within the organization regarding decision-making processes, the upholding of transparency, and how employee concerns are addressed. I'm not raising these issues to assign blame, but rather to highlight the critical need for transparent and accountable processes, genuine respect for internal expertise in an environment where staff can safely share concerns without the fear of exclusion or retaliation. I urge the board to reflect on these matters to ensure that all staff can contribute meaningfully and that public funds are spent responsibly with the transparency and accountability our community deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. All right, that brings us to item number eight, the much anticipated LCAP presentation for SBCEO 2526. And Bridget Boblitz will kick us off.
Well, good afternoon again, uh, for those of you who hadn't seen earlier. Nice to see you. Uh, and I'm here today with a team. So the LCAP development is a team effort, and I want to start by just acknowledging the hard work of three additional individuals who will be presenting alongside me today. And that is Dr. Elise Simmons. She's our Director of Student and Community Services, who really is instrumental in coordinating and moving our LCAP team along to finalize this product and put it all together for your review and our CDE review. A Director Renee Wheeler, as you know, is the, uh, oversees our juvenile court and community schools. And Amy Willis is our Director of Transitional Youth Services. So you'll hear a little bit from each of them today, as well as myself, related to the LCAP. So I'm just going to start with a brief overview of the document. You all, my glasses slide away. You all should have received the LCAP document, a bound book, and hopefully you've had time to review that and take a look at that. There are really four main components. I just want to highlight for you. The first is the budget overview for parents. So it's the very first document you'll see as you peruse that book. In addition, there's the 2526 LCAP, which is made up of multiple parts. There are summary reflections, a portion about how we engage our educational partners, our goals, actions, and metrics, as well as the 2425 goal analysis. That is what's considered an annual update, and that is now embedded within the goals themselves. So you'll see that in the LCAP as part of a reflection piece, as well as a section on increased and improved services. Then you'll come to our expenditure and contributing action tables, and finally, the instructions, which are a required element of the LCAP. We're gonna just take a brief look back at this year and how did we get here? So our scope of work, you'll recall in February, we came and presented on a mid-year update that was really looking at where we were to date on the LCAP from 2425. That goal analysis piece that you see now, or the annual update, is where we have finished the year. I already talked about that. And next we'll look at, sorry, the plan that we have in place for the 2526 year for LCAP. So we have refined our goals, relooked at some metrics and actions, and updated our expenditures moving into this next year. I will say that the LCAP overall is a three-year planning document. So it started in 2324, and it'll take us through next year. Excuse me, year two, yes, 2627. So it's a full three-year document. We are in our second year of that planning phase. So the LCAP overall acts as a guiding document or a strategic plan for both our juvenile court and community schools, as well as our transitional youth services who support foster youth throughout the county. This current LCAP you're looking at has five goals, which outline focus areas. There are three broad goals, and you'll see those sort of highlighted here on this slide. Goals one and two are specific to our juvenile court and community school programs. Goal three is specific to our Transitional Youth Services Department and our support for foster youth countywide. That is a requirement solely for county offices of education. Goal four is a maintenance goal. This is really related to JCCS and also includes our countywide requirement for expelled youth, which is a, a part that's solely for county offices of education. The fifth goal that we have is related to equity multiplier funds. It is called a focus goal, and this goal in particular is really targeted to support a student group that has the lowest performance on one or more state indicators on the dashboard. For our juvenile court and community schools, we have identified suspension rates for multiple student groups. So you can see this sort of listed here on this slide to focus our efforts and attention on for these specific funds. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our team, and Elise Simmons is going to come up first to talk about our LCAP development process.
Thank you, Bridget. And good afternoon, board members. Dr. Selsito, Anna. Um, in February, I was, um, I presented the mid-year update. And so you'll see some of the slide in particulars taken from that presentation as well. So you might, you might remember it. So this just gives you an overview of the development process. It's a year-long endeavor. Um, and we begin early in the winter by developing and presenting the mid-year report. Throughout the year, we gather educational partner feedback, but specifically really in, in the winter and early spring, there's some more formal feedback sessions with different groups, which I'll go over in a moment. Taking the feedback from our educational partners, looking at our data for the year, really kicks off the annual review process or the goal analysis as it's laid out in the LCAP itself. During this process, we may revise our goals, our actions, our metrics, and even our targeted outcomes, depending on the feedback we received, as well as our analysis of the metrics. And then additionally, in the springtime, this is at the same time we're creating the budget to support our goals and our actions, really ensuring that we're able to implement them and meet the needs of our unduplicated students, as well as all of our students. So that's the overall process. The annual update, or again, as it's called, the goal analysis in the report. I want to go into this a little bit more in detail. It's a critical piece of our LCAP development. So we look at what we're doing this year in order to develop next year's plan. And that's just, again, that really, that's the best practice, looking at data to inform our next steps. And so we analyzed our progress. We took our year one metrics that we had, we have now, we identified successes, we looked at areas of need and focus. We then asked questions. And when I say we, it depends. So with juvenile court community school, it's the leadership team. So that's made up of Renee and other administrators, um, as well as teacher leads. And then for the Transitional Youth Services Department program, that's a combination of Amy, myself, and her data analysis, and they bring in feedback from their educational partners as well. So, um, two different groups, and we're looking at the data and we're asking these questions. You know, are there improvements needed? Or where are we doing well? Where can we revise? Are there other supports? So we're coming from a place of gen wonderment, always looking to make sure that our students are moving towards thriving, joy, success, right? And as we're doing that, we're evaluating each of our actions. Should we keep that action? Should we revise it? Should we eliminate it? And should we add it? And you'll see the commentary in the goals analysis as we're going through this process. Each prompt guides us to answer questions and to outline what we did well. Where have we seen improvement? Some questions. What, what changes are we making and why? And, and so you'll see that in the goal analysis. And all of that will lead us to the development of our LCAP for next school year. And a critical, critical piece of this whole process is engaging our educational partners. So I just want to elevate a few groups in our students and staff area. With students, there was empathy interviews, focus groups, survey data, staff, ongoing conversations with staff at each weekly meeting, as well as collecting survey, survey data from them, special education, SELPA, the juvenile court community schools leadership team, bargaining units, behavioral health staff, as well as working with our CTE director and coordinator. In the parents and community partners area, we, of course, parents and guardians, that's through surveys, conferences, phone calls, our school site council at the juvenile court community school, probation administration staff, district partners. And then for our Transitional Youth Services Program, working closely with the liaisons and the Foster Youth Coordinating Services Program Executive Advisory Committee. It's really a long name. And I would like to now turn it over to Renee Wheeler, the Director of our Juvenile Court and Community School, so she can highlight all the wonderful things that have been going on and areas for improvement.
Thank you, Elise, and good afternoon. Good to see all of you again. It's been so long. And now that we've had a chance, uh, to look at the overview of our three-year cycle for the LCAP and our annual review process, I would like to dive a little deeper into our goals and cover some of our successes, our challenges, and then, of course, finally, the goals. So I would like to start with our successes. And during our analysis, we identified four areas of success. College and prepare, college-prepared A through G courses. Since becoming WASC accredited in 2023, we have registered nine of our courses with the University of California Office of the President, UCOP. Very long name. Uh, A through G Course Management Portable. I wasn't even done. These A through G courses range from in-person English and algebra to multiple courses through our online program, PEAK. As a result, we have seen a significant increase in the number of students enrolled in our A through G courses, as well as students successfully completing three courses, these courses with a grade of C or higher. In 202425, we had 90.4% of high school students enrolled in an A through G course, and 28.6% of these students successfully completed the course. Uh, our performance on, uh, CAST mathematics, JCCS administers the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, the CAST, to all seventh, eighth, and eleventh graders each spring. In the 202324 administration of the CAST, we had a 6.7% increase of students who nearly met or met the standard from 2223. Our teachers have continuously engaged in professional learning related to mathematics through a work group that is facilitated by our curriculum and instruction department. And the work group meets six times a year to develop, to provide teachers with an in-depth understanding of the content standards. In 202425, we researched, piloted, and selected a new curriculum. This critical professional development will continue next year with individual coaching to support the implementation of our new curriculum. Our parent and guardian engagement. So our concerted efforts toward parent engagement is paying off. And as you can see pictured up there, uh, our event in October of 2024 was how to access community resources. And it was almost a packed house. Almost as many as we have here today. And so we are very proud of the, um, increased and sustained parent guardian engagement that we have experienced during the 202425 school year in JCCS. We increased our parent-teacher conference attendance rate by 2.3% from our baseline established in 202324 of 87%. We have also seen steady improvement in the number of parents signing up for Parent Square from 80% to 96% through our community, our California Community Schools Partnership Program, or CCSPP, work and continued utilization of the Prometora Network. We have increased the number of parent information night offerings from three in 202223 to 10 last year in 202425. And our metrics show that we have consistently maintained a high level of parent involvement in our IEP process, with 100% of parents providing input during the assessment process and 88% of parents participating in the IEP meetings. We are also able to provide interpretation, translation services in Spanish and Mistech at 100% of our events. In order to sustain this high level of parent guardian engagement, the LCAP will continue to have actions that focus on providing outreach, language access, and a variety of opportunities to engage our families. And then our last area of reclassification and progress on LPAC. In 202425, we had 40.6%, or 13 out of 32 of EL students increase a proficiency level as measured on the LPAC. This is even more remarkable when you consider the high level of long-term English learners, or LTALs, in JCCS. 77.8% of ELs who are long-term English learners, as compared to the county average of 25%. Since the LPAC becomes increasingly more difficult as students enter high school, this means that LTALs have a harder time earning the required score of a four. We are encouraged that the strategies that teachers are using in the classroom are having a positive impact on our English learners. We believe this incremental improvement will set our students up for success as they transition to their homeschool. Yay. All right, LCAP highlights, and the area. We also identified the following three areas of identified need. First, in the college-prepared enrollment of students in a CTE course, we had mixed success in this area. Uh, for the second consecutive year, we had 100% of our high school students at the community school enrolled in a CTE course. So yay. Unfortunately, we saw a decline in enrollment at the court school of 18%. In order to ensure that we continue to improve in the area of CTE, the JCCS director, the JCCS, whoop, the coordinator and the CTE director will continue to collaborate with the goal to strengthen the CTE course offerings to continue to identify industry certifications, internships, work-based learning, and dual enrollment opportunities. Um, our suspension rate is another area of need. We have achieved some success in reducing our overall suspension rate by 6% from last year. And we would like to first celebrate reducing our suspension rate in our court school by 5.8% this year. Unfortunately, we saw an increase at our community school of 9.1%, which is why we still see this as an area of needed improvement. And content mastery in mathematics. Math continues to be an area of need of improvement. While we celebrate the fact that in the 2324 administration of the CAST, we had a 6.7% increase of students who nearly met or met the standard from 2223, we recognize that we still have considerable room for growth to meet our goal of 35%. In addition, we saw a decline of .24 grade level growth on our local assessment, the adaptive diagnostic assessment of mathematics, or ADAM. All right, so for our highlights, uh, we will start with goal one, which reads, "All students will demonstrate proficiency of grade-level content standards and will be prepared for college and/or career." This includes four state priority areas. Area two, state standards. Area four, pupil achievement. Area seven, course access. And area eight, pupil outcome. So this is our biggest goal. It is aimed at improving academic achievement, meeting the needs of students with disabilities and English learners, and preparing students for college and careers. Actions focus on improving student achievement on CAST testing, providing credit recovery and intervention for students, offering A through G courses, and expanding our CTE program. Goal two. In goal two, our focus area is on strengthening educational partnerships. So it reads, "In collaboration with staff and the community, students and families will be provided with services to address individual needs and support students in overcoming barriers and impacting their education." The areas covered in this goal are area three, parent involvement and family engagement, and area five, pupil engagement. And then lastly, uh, priority area six, school climate. Goal two is aimed at improving school climate, student and parent engagement, and providing supports for students and families. Actions focus on providing counseling services, behavioral health supports and training, and increasing parent engagement through parent outreach and ongoing communication. Goal four. Um, this is our maintenance goal. And it, it reads, "Continue to successfully implement programs that support basic conditions for learning." And priority, priority area one, which is the basic conditions of learning, uh, based on the Williams Report, and state priority, priority area nine, coordination of instruction for expelled youth, which is the required, uh, priority area for COEs. Actions focus on maintaining a robust-based program for JCCS students and countywide services for expelled youth. And then, uh, goal five. As Bridget mentioned on goal, on slide five, this year we have an added focus goal for the new Equity Multiplier Funds. Goal five targets the student group in JCCS with the lowest performance on the dashboard, which is priority area six, school climate, specifically for our which is Priority Area Six, School Climate, specifically for our school's suspension rate. Some of the actions we've identified are our actions on utilizing restorative approaches, creating calming spaces. And you can see in the lower right-hand corner, the calming space that we created for when our students are elevated. And our student-led beautification projects, which is pictured right next to it on the left, and which is our outdoor patio area for our students. And also implementing a student onboarding process for when students are enrolled at Fitzgerald. Our LCAP highlights and increased and improved services is one item we're required to report on in the LCAP is what we are doing to increase our and improve our base program that specifically targets and supports and services for English learners, foster youth, and socially-economic disadvantaged students. Currently, 100% of students are considered unduplicated and fall into at least one of these categories. So in developing a plan to meet the needs of our unduplicated students, we focused on providing seven additional supports and services above our base program. These include additional academic supports, and we use the intervention program, Let's Go Learn, our community outreach and career counselor to support students with transitions, course enrollments, and conflict resolution. Three, our teacher-student ratios. We provide smaller classes for greater one-on-one and small group intervention. Four, parent engagement events, and we contract with the Prometores Network to support our outreach efforts. Five, translation services. We provide language access to our families. Six, behavioral health counselors. We contract with Family Service Agency, ANCA, to provide substance use disorder counselor and a mental health social worker. And then lastly, seven, behavioral support with a security staff. So, security personnel were on campus for seven hours every day, overseeing and intervening as necessary before, during, and after school hours. And he proved to be a great access. We definitely got the right man for the job. So with that, I will turn it over to Amy.
Good afternoon. And in case you missed it, because some of you I haven't met before, I'm Amy Willis, and I'm the Director of Transitional Youth Services. The mission of our department is to strengthen the system of support that exists for our foster and our homeless students. And that's what we aim to do. So I'm just gonna put it all up there. I only have one slide to contribute to this conversation, but it anchors us. I shared last year when I presented, I'm entering my third year, I'm almost on with my second year with the county. And I shared last year that our mission and our LCAP goal, although it's just one slide, really is like a rubric. I came straight out of the classroom into this role, and I needed that. I needed something to ground me, to sort of anchor our work, and this is it. And so, as you can see, if you read our goal, it very much parallels what our mission is. And we have that mission hanging above all of our desks. And we look at the work we're doing, and we make sure it aligns with the mission that we have. And when I think about just this one goal, I could talk for a really long time about it, but I was told maybe not to talk for a really long time about it. So I'm gonna talk for a little bit of time about it. And if you look at these bullet points here, these actions, it's really interesting. This improve inter-agency collaboration and strengthen collaboration with districts specifically. These two bullet points, when I do a needs assessment for our foster youth education liaisons, these rise to the top. This is what they want. They want to work with agencies so that they know when a student comes to them, they have a resource to send them to. They have someone to reach out to. They have that system of support that is strong for the student. And then also, we're finding more and more. My first year, we kind of did a lot of Zoom. Now we're trying to do a lot of in-person, regional in-person. We just had a regional in-person end-of-year celebration. And I got such positive feedback on Bullet Two there, that everybody loved working with other districts. We had people that came all the way from Santa Barbara up here to Santa Maria because they wanted to meet with districts who were different than their districts. So it was really, really powerful. And the way that we structured these end-of-year celebrations was to focus on the celebrations from the year, to focus on the struggles and the lessons and the plans that we have for the future. And so I thought, with the little time that I have, I just kind of want to highlight some of the celebrations that we had as Transitional Youth Services. So you get a sense of some of the highlights and the things that we're doing to really address these goals, or this goal, I should say, and stick with our mission. So I want to start by just highlighting one of our most powerful inter-agency collaborations as Transitional Youth Services has been with the nonprofit YouthWell. And we reached out to them because they run, if you're familiar with YouthWell, they run youth advocacy boards all over the county. And what I'm hearing in those same needs assessments from our liaison is we need to elevate student voice. We need to hear the voice of our foster youth so we can better serve them. So I, because my husband says I'm always fishing for friends, I'm always trying to get people to collaborate with me, I reached out to them really early on and just said, hey, I think there's, there's some possibilities for us to work together. And one of the other things that come up on, comes up on our needs assessment is the need for all of our liaisons, all of our staff, really, all across the county, to approach our foster youth, to approach all students with a trauma-responsive approach. And so at the beginning of our year this year, we had YouthWell collaborate with us to provide an all-day mental health first aid training for all of our liaisons. And during that time, 36 people got certified in mental health first aid to better serve their students. And so that was really powerful, and that connection with YouthWell has continued. Our end-of-year celebration was, they, they weren't necessarily here, but they informed a lot of the work that we did. And it's leading us toward a beginning-of-the-year mini-retreat for our liaisons that focuses again on elevating student voice. I've had listening sessions, I had one today with some of our liaisons about what do you want to get out of that? What are you hoping to see happen on your campuses to support these students? And I got really good input that I'll share with YouthWell, and we'll work together and come up with some ways that we can, you know, I don't know if a youth action board is possible at every high school, but you know, something along those lines where we can better hear the voice of our foster youth. So that, that has been a very powerful collaboration. Another one real quickly is our newly-established monthly kind of coffee meetings with Family Care Network. They have a program called Independent Living Program, and this focuses on kids who are graduating and going to be on their own, who are in the foster care system. And what we do is we meet with them every month, and we bring our list of seniors, and they bring their list of seniors, and we cross-reference and make sure that we talk to the social workers and get them referred for ILP services. Make sure that they're taken care of beyond post-secondary. And that's been a really great collaboration, but moving forward, we've decided that it doesn't make sense that we're just doing this for our seniors. So in our last meeting, we printed out all our high school students, so we can make sure that we're tackling their needs earlier than senior year. So these two, they're just two of quite a few collaborations that are newer and have been very, very meaningful and lead us closer to meeting that goal. The other thing I would mention is that we have an amazing executive advisory council that I meet with three times a year. And we have the most passionate, incredible people who serve on that council. I have shared with them our goal here. I've shared with them every step of the way, the progress we're making. I have data presentations every time I meet with them. And they have been so helpful in this. And I'm proud to say that we finally have an executive advisory council that represents all of the stakeholders that we wanted. Well, that's not true. We still don't have a judge. But aside from a judge, we have every other stakeholder. We have two new foster, former foster youth on our council. We have representation from our ECE program here at SBCEO. And we have some representatives from CASA, which we didn't have before. So some new members who have really just reinvigorated the group. And it's been really, really helpful and definitely applies to this goal. So that's, that, those are my highlights. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Yes.
Do you rap? Other metrics like you do for JCCS for the transitional youth, like transi-, expulsion, suspensions?
We do. We track chronic absenteeism, suspension and expulsion rates. And what is the other one that's in the LCAP? Graduation rate.
Okay, and then, but you don't set goals or objectives for those areas, or are they in the details of the LCAP?
They're in the details of the LCAP. And we do look to improve those rates. And remember, our department is supporting the staff that supports all of the districts and charter schools. So I can't comment on every single district, but we do look at the overall picture, and we do seek to improve those rates. Absolutely. Perfect. Yep. No, no. I mean, actually, part of our work is to look at the LCAPs for the districts and see where their goals lie. But our goal is to report on the Santa Barbara County results in those areas.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna wrap us up on budget, the final kind of component of our LCAP. And so there are really four main components in developing the LCAP budget. The first is, is that we calculate and report our estimated actual expenses for the 24-25 school year, and those are reported in the action tables themselves. So you'll see that at the back. We also include our adopted budget expenditures for 25-26 planned actions, and we report that within each goal, and it is also included in the action tables at the back. Thirdly, we ensure that the requirements are met to increase and improve services for our unduplicated students. So you heard Renee talk about those seven items. And that is based on a formula of our supplemental and concentration grant funding specifically to support unduplicated students. That is also included in the goals themselves and in the action tables at the back. And finally, everything is sort of rolled up into the Budget Overview for Parents, which is located at the very front of your book. So you can see all of those numbers in explicit detail, both in those contributing action tables, or excuse me, action tables, and Budget Overview for Parents. I'm just going to highlight briefly just some numbers, just to pull them out, so you can kind of look at some broad strokes here. In 24-25, we spent our estimated actuals for our base program is coming in at about three point, almost $4 million. We'll just round up for ease. And our estimated actuals for those increased and improved services is just shy of $600,000. As we look forward into 25-26, we are looking at a base program, and this includes, I just wanted to let you know, this includes our LCFF dollars. This does include some state grant funds that we receive, and it also includes some local and federal fund dollars. So there's quite a bit wrapped up into that. We're looking at about a $4.2 million that we're spending allocated here in our LCAP. And then when we look at our planned expenditures for our increased and improved services, we're just over $700,000. Next steps in terms of this. Today was sort of the presentation and public hearing we'll be having on our LCAP. Next week, I will do a presentation on the local indicators and explain how those are connected to the LCAP that you're looking at today. And then the board will approve the LCAP along with the budget, which I believe Steve will be presenting on. And that is it, unless there are any questions for our team. I know it was a lengthy presentation, so. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Bridget and team. It was really interesting to have the tour just prior to this. It gave it a lot more color. Not that the report isn't brilliantly written, but I actually understand it more. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing on the Santa Barbara County Education Office 2025-26 Local Control and Accountability Plan. We'll go ahead and close that here. Okay. Next up, we have a presentation on the 25-26 County School Service Fund Budget. I wanted to thank our colleagues Judy, Vida, and Guy for sitting on the Budget Committee. And Steve is ready to take us through that. Thanks.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure to present to you the 25-26 Proposed Adopted Budget. This year, you received a binder. In that binder, there is a budget narrative, provides some explanations of some of the changes, numbers, you know, essentially some of the things that are happening behind those numbers for your reference, both last year and reflection, and going forward into next year. You also have a copy of the presentation that I'll be sharing today, as well as standardized account code structure sheets, which is kind of the comprehensive accounting of the budget. And then there's some references or some different documents in the back that have to do with fund balances, as well as some common terminology, things like that. So I'll begin by thanking all of you for reviewing that material. Hopefully, it was helpful and helped to provide information that you needed to get a comprehensive understanding of the budget. And I'll reiterate what President already said. The input and insight that we receive and questions from the Budget Committee, Mrs. Frost, Ms. Alvarez Flores, and Mr. Walker. Not only does it help to inform this particular presentation today, it helps us to consider potential items that we might want to include or perspectives for our future budget presentation. I also want to give a big thanks to our SBCEO Fiscal Committee, Nicole Evanson, our Administrator of Internal Services, Adeselie Vasquez, our Fiscal Services Controller, and Jessica Hallberg, who is our first year with us as our Fiscal Services Manager, first year in that position. Not only for the work that it takes to put the budget together, but as well as the time that it takes to collaborate with our program managers to really capture their program plans within the budget. And kind of in that spirit, that is our budget objective. It's to continually adjust and monitor this budget so that we can serve our overall purpose, which is to connect students with specialized services and deliver direct instruction, connect educators with professional development and career growth, and connect local school districts and charter schools to services and support that are essential for planning operations and fiscal integrity. So I'll give an overview of the budget, budget timeline, budget structure before we get into the numbers for this current year. We've seen this slide a couple times, but just kind of as a reminder, this is a single adoption process. It's a moment in time. We've captured the numbers as we understand them now for our adopted budget for the upcoming year. We have two reporting periods, first interim in December of the, of this year, and then a second interim in March of next year. And then we tie up the budget after we've completed the entire fiscal year, and that happens around October of next year. So a little bit about what goes into each of these parts of the cycle. Right now, we're using the May revision to the Governor's Budget as input on what our revenue sources would be. That state budget is enacted by July 1st, and then we will use those numbers to update first interim. We're also looking at our reporting data for ourselves and our districts that was done kind of in this spring as our most current numbers. And then, like I mentioned, we have our managers' meetings and our estimated actuals from this current year to help us look at our expenditures. First interim, we look at that enacted budget. We update any revenue changes at that time. By then, we've completed all of our reporting for this current year, so we can plug in those numbers. And then we look at our spending through October 31st of the year. And then second interim, the enacted budget hasn't changed at that point. Now we're looking at our first quarter essentially reporting for that year. And then we're meeting with our managers and really looking at our spending through January 31st of the year. And then, like I mentioned, we have all of our data numbers, not until October of the following year to tie up that budget. And then another thing to highlight as, before we get into our overall budget, is what are those differences between COEs and districts? You know, we have a small percentage of the COE of our, of our funding that is unrestricted. So you'll see that in the budget as we look at our restricted funds from the general. So you'll see that in the budget as we look at our restricted funds from the general fund, as well as our child development funds, which are restricted. And that differs that differs from the districts, which tend to have a large majority of which are unrestricted. We have multiple management positions leading our countywide work and services. You'll see that in the portion of our budget that has to do with school district support, as well as student services. Whereas districts, more teachers, more kind of direct classroom type support. And then many fees for services, contracted work, excessive billing costs, you'll see that as well. So a little bit about the COEs, LCFF. Again, you've seen this before, so I'll kind of go through this part quickly. Your operations is our base grant based on the number of districts and we have, and then based on their ADA as well. We get additional funding for LEA support. That's to support them with their LCAPs, districts and charters, as well as those that qualify for differentiated assistance. And then for our alternative education grant, that has to do with ADA for our JCCS and community schools, as well as additional funding for certain student groups within the school. And then there's a base rate funding which accounts for if you operate one juvenile court school, and if you get a certain amount, and then an additional certain amount if you have a if you operate a county community school, which obviously we do both. And then a little bit on excess property taxes. So with that LC, with our LCFF funding specifically, if our local property taxes do not reach our LCFF entitlement, then there's a contribution from additional state aid to reach that entitlement level. For districts, if they exceed, if their local property taxes exceed that LCFF entitlement, they get to keep those additional funds. At the COE, we have to return those excess property taxes to fund state, return to the state to fund trial courts. And so in our, in your, in when I present the budget, you'll see excess property taxes as both a revenue and an expenditure. So we track it coming in, and then we track it going out. It helps to isolate that from the rest of the revenue. And then when I mention LCFF, it's important to highlight that portion when we talk about the COE having much less unrestricted funds than a district. LCFF only makes up 28% of our funding sources, whereas a district will have significantly more or greater portion of LCFF funds. Some of the other portions are, I'll kind of start from the top. A small portion of restricted children, family resource services, career technical education, and other unrestricted categoricals. Our restricted special ed funds are about 24%. And then you'll see the biggest portion on the bottom there, which is our restricted child development or early care and education funds at 43%.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Just on that piece about that we only received 28% versus district may receive more. The May has to do with the basic aid versus I know it's not called revenue limit anymore.
Yeah, and the 28%, it actually has to do with the fact that the LCFF funding formula, since it's a student component for districts.
Right.
It's all funded through the number of students they have. So it's, it's the funding formula for the districts is different than the COEs. That's why they receive significantly more.
And then on top of that, if they happen to be a basic aid, it would be even more.
Correct.
Okay.
Good question. And then just some of our restricted funds, even breaking down the restricted special ed, restricted CEFRs, CTE, and ECE a little bit more, but that's some of our federal revenues, titles, ones, twos, and threes. Special education we mentioned, and child nutrition, medical administrative activities, one-time funds like ESER, child development funds we mentioned, and then CTE CEFRs. And then on the unrestricted side, that's our LCFF sources, our lottery funds, and then our education protection account, which comes before you today as well. And then other factors that contribute into the budget that are, you know, on the contributions to pensions, the CalSTRS, it remains consistent, but it is a high number. And then you'll see CalPERS kind of fluctuates, but tends to be increasing. So those are additional expenses that we have to account for from year to year as well. Okay, so I'll transition into the actual adopted, proposed adopted budget for 2526. And I'll begin with an overview of the state budget. At May revision, the state budget appeared to have a shortfall of about $12 billion for the for the 2526 fiscal year. And they were able to mitigate that with various solutions, including using reserve funds, deferrals, reductions, things like that. So while that largely keeps the education budget and guarantee protected for this upcoming year, it does make us weary of future years when maybe some of those various solutions are no longer available. And so as we look ahead, the changing national conditions, the economists with those in mind, economists consider we're going to be entering a growth recession. And that varies from a traditional recession in the sense that is maybe not as severe or not as imminent. But what's indicating that is tariffs and downgraded personal income tax revenues in 5.2 billion lower revenue in 2526. So projections based on those conditions are that the revenue from income tax will be less in the upcoming year. And we see that now already. At May revise, the Prop 98 guarantee was 2.9 billion over what we predicted in last June or this time last year. But we had an uptick in that in January. We thought it was going to be significantly more. So higher in January, and now we're kind of trending back downward. So all that to say, looking ahead for the coming years, you know, to be strategic in our in our budgeting. There was a 2.3% COLA in the May revision. At January, that was a little bit higher. That's a nationally produced number. It's not a California number. It's based on the gross national product that they calculated. But that is an indication of kind of what's tacked on to some of the funding that we receive. It is applied to LCFF and some of the other programs. But certain programs don't receive it. Some of those one-time grant funds, our state preschools did not receive it this year. So it's not a blanket application to all of our funds. And kind of big picture overviews in revenue changes for the upcoming year. We saw a total decrease of about $14.2 million. And I'll go into a little bit of detail on the breakdowns there. So unrestricted general fund, a lot of that is the LCFF, so we didn't see a huge change there. Unrestricted general fund, in the restricted general fund, the 5.2 million. The largest contributors to that are the special education program takebacks by by Lompoc, as well as some of the expiration of one-time restricted grants and funds. So those particular ones have certain assignments to them, so when they go away, they're not necessarily impacting the day-to-day operations. And on the child development fund side, the 8.8 million has some significant factors contributing to that is the removal of unearned income from the preschool programs in Santa Maria. We know we're looking for space. Once we're able to operate those, then we can plug the revenue back in, so it's not taking away from any existing programs. There's also kind of one-time stipend funds that went away. Those do not impact our contract costs, so we're able to operate the programs consistently. And then one other factor with both of those two is there are funds and grants that we have that we don't necessarily assign the revenue maybe until first interim, because we're not sure if those funds carry into the next year, even though we might have an indication that they do. And then our revenue assumptions, the increase in LCFF, the 2.3% COLA, that's accounted for in our revenue. We removed those one-time funds, some still related to COVID. And then we decreased funding for differentiated assistance based on the calculation, you know, that we receive on the number of schools and districts and charters and differentiated assistance over a three-year period. And then including that excess property tax as well. And then some big picture expenditure changes, you'll see a total decrease of 6.9 million. So the expenditure decrease doesn't match the revenue decrease because we had a surplus this year, which you'll see in our bottom line. So we didn't have to reduce expenditures by as much as the revenue reductions. We just kind of right-fitted the, you know, the budget for this year. And then some of the assumptions was a 4% increase for all staff. Increases in employer contribution costs, like I mentioned on a previous slide, and reducing expenditures with the expiration of one-time grants. And then, of course, facilities, projects, deferred maintenance, facilities, funds are accounted for in those expenditures as well. And then, as I jump into the the breakdown of the of the budget, just keeping in mind that we do follow the standardized account code structure. That allows us to track, as would any LEA, be able to track our general fund separately from our child development fund. So general fund, Fund One, child development fund, Fund 12, we track those separately. Today, you'll see them presented kind of together and then broken apart. But again, following the standardized account code structure. So overall, we're looking at my eyes are worse than I thought. I'm going to look here. Sorry about that. I know it's 70 something, right? Okay, that still didn't get me there. I'm gonna go to this. Sorry about that. I'll call on the audience to read it to me. There you go. 76% of the budget is on student support. And again, this is combined general fund and child development fund. 14% is school and district support. 4% is internal support, and then 6% is the excess property tax. So going into each of those in a little bit more detail, if we highlight the district and school support, that includes our teacher induction program. I mentioned LCAP, Information Technology Service, our school business advisory service that has legislated oversight of budgets, and then administrative credential program. So the variety of programs that are included in district and school support. And then our internal support is our fiscal services, human resources, and maintenance and operation. And then going into a little bit more detail on the the services side, our other student services include JCCS, CEFRs, Partners in Education CCP. And then we have 20, 24% for special education and 42% for for ECE. And then just as a note, that breakdown is pretty consistent from year to year. There might be a fluctuation of 1 to 2% in any one of those sections of the of the graph. And then adding dollar amounts to the budget, we're looking at an overall budget of almost 156 and a half million dollars. And so when we look at student support services, almost 119 million are assigned there. And then our internal support, about six and a half million. And then district and school support, about $22.6 million there. And then I'll go ahead and look at the the two-year comparison. So our estimated actuals is our best estimation of where our, where our budget was probably in late April. So we try and estimate our expenditures at that point for the remainder of the year. And we compare our proposed budget to that number, because that's a component of where we build from. So our beginning balance, and this again is our combined general fund and child development fund, our beginning balance was about 36 and a half million when we began 2425, and our estimated actuals predicted to be about 46, 45.6 million to end this year. So we carry that budget, that ending balance into next year for our proposed budget. And we would be looking at a revenue of slightly over 158 million. And then our expenditures at about 156 and a half million. So we'd be carrying over a little bit more into our ending balance at the end of next year.
Okay, what is the, do we lose a program? What's the $12 million reduction in revenue on basis of same expenses?
Oh, so it had a little bit to do with kind of the previous slide with our whole overall revenue, and I'll just go back to that real quick. Sort of inconsistent. So we saw some, we saw some loss of revenue in our restricted general fund, which had to do with our special education program takebacks, as well as the expiration of some of our one-time funds, grant funds. And then on the ECE side, it had to do with removing some unearned income for a program that we're not currently operating, as well as some particular grants that we don't know if they're going to be carried into the into the following year. So.
So again, the one-time money that I sort of get, yeah, when I see that kind of change, what strikes me is generally some program went away. And I heard you say, as well, some programs that were not running. You know, to me, it looks like it's $10 million, or close to it.
Yeah, so so a portion of it, probably almost half of that, is is funds that were one-time funds that we were expending. Last year was the last year to expend them. So a lot of them had to do with materials, supplies, community support. They weren't used to operate the program. So contract costs remain the same, but some particular funds aren't carrying over into next year to do additional for additional material supplies, things like that.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And we'll see at first interim that there probably will be an increase in the revenue when some of those that can be carried over at that point are. And then the next one kind of breaks out that number into our general fund unrestricted, general fund restricted, and our child development fund. So those numbers, those changes that I showed in revenue and expenditures in the previous, in the earlier slide, these are the numeric values assigned to those. So we see the in the unrestricted side, the revenue remains about the same from estimated actuals at around 33 and a half million, those first two columns. And then that's where you'll see the restricted programs. You'll see that change of a little over 5 million. And then on the ECE, the child development side, you'll see the change of about 8, 8.8 million. So this is just breaking that down a little bit further. Now, kind of lastly, on the budget side here, not only do we look at the the budget year, so 2526, where we'd have about a 28.21% reserve level. We go ahead and look at the the next two out years, and we'll see that we're about 26.7 and 2627, and about 25.2 and 2728. So all that to indicate that we are able to meet our financial obligations in the upcoming year, as well as the next two years. With that, I'll see if there's any questions on the on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve. School finance is like no other. It takes a very special team, and I think we've got such a good one here at County Ed. Now we have a public hearing on the 2526 County School Service Fund Budget. Open the public hearing. Okay, we'll close that hearing. Which brings us to the superintendent's report. Susan?
Wonderful. Thank you so much, and good afternoon to the board and and to our team who's here in the audience today. And let me first address the board and say thank you so very much for being part of all the moving parts today. There were lots that we were wanting to cover, and I think connecting the dots here with the presentations actually was a really great bridge. So really appreciate the board. To Anna and to comms and to AV, Donald, thank you so much for all the accommodations that you've made, all of the all of the accommodations, and to our staff here. The presentations are truly incredible. You've put so much time into it. Not only the presentations, but the work that we do each day, then to illustrate those into the report. So wanted to say thank you. Lots of, and great snacks. Yes. Important. That's important, too. How, as previously mentioned, the graduations, I mean, it is so wonderful to, it is so joyful. All the promotions and the events and the graduations countywide. And yet, and of course, not a yet, I will say, and we know that we are operating schools year-round. So a lot of appreciation for those are extending into the into the summer months as well. I was part of a, as many of you are, part of a Santa Barbara Scholarship Foundation presentation countywide. And when they announced that they had provided more this year than in the previous years, which each year you think, how can you even top that year? 7.7 million distributed to over 2,100 graduates. I mean, that is incredible. So this is an agency completely separate from SBCEO, and yet absolutely in partnership with the high school seniors that are graduating from throughout the county. So it was, it's been, it's an incredible organization and opportunity, just as you were sharing President Cardy about the scholarship opportunities at Carpentry High School. These are scholarships throughout. It's really phenomenal. In the report, Um in the report, uh there, I I we kept it pretty succinct. Um wanted to just lift up the reading and literacy added authorization graduation, so to speak. Um that really came from Ellen Barker's division, led by Noel Barthel and supported by the staff. These eighteen individuals uh from the county who added on onto their credential, this reading and literacy added um authorization, of which now next year they'll be thirty-five and after that'll be twenty-three. I mean, we're adding on to it through a grant that Noel Barthel wrote for. Um and uh to hear, we were there, Ellen and I were there to present the certificates and to, you know, congratulate everyone and thank everybody for their year of intense learning. But when we turned the microphones to them, they were the ones who talked about the shift, complete shift in their outlook, their profession, profession, their instruction. I mean, really has has changed them immensely. And it's in the area of literacy, of which literacy is so important. So just really an incredible opportunity. We could have um said, you know, hey, great, great job, everybody. You finished the grant. But instead Ellen and her team said, you know, we need to pull a celebration together. And we put it, we celebrated at Los Olivos and really um, you know, marked the moment because these are educators who on their own decided, we're going to give up our Saturdays, Sundays, nights and mornings to do this, and it's truly commendable. So wanted to lift that up and you'll see some really great um uh highlights as well. One other one I want to make sure that we uh speak about is the um reading uh screener, reading difficulty screener that all districts that have served kindergartners need to um ensure that they adopt. Um and so our special education team did the same. You'll see their, their, what they're, we're adopting in in this book um in the report. What I will say is um when speaking with Kirsten Escobedo and the team, um the the assessments that we already provide in special education around for these young learners is, goes actually over and beyond what this reading screener will do typically. So you can see there's a provision for a family to say, we're, we're good, we can opt out of it. But we did select it because it's very important that we're aligned with the state. So wanted to make sure that you knew that. But before I have, I do have a few other comments, but before I go on on those that are not in the report, any questions from the report, from the board? Okay, then I would like to just add a few more comments, which are um you um you very likely read, you've, I'm sure you read in the budget narrative, um something that I wanted to call attention to, which is that um our our local uh district here, Santa Maria Benita, our largest school district in in the county, has um let notified uh notified me that they will be requesting to take back their preschool programs, uh special education um in a year and a day. So in after, after the next year. So Kirsten and I have met with the superintendent and special education director to really talk that through. That would be, uh we thought Lompoc was a large uh take, program takeback. This would be much larger than that. Um it would affect um I want to say, let me see, if we were looking at current students this year, um all told and all of those programs, seven, over seven hundred students. Um and in terms of staff that support these programs, it would be about ninety staff members. So it's a really, really big request. We'll talk about it in the future, a future board meeting, but I wanted you to know about that um because it's a, it's a real, um it's a shift. And of course, our, our uh frame of of mind is um anything that a district would like in terms of serving their own students, we will support. We want to be there to be supportive. Having said that, we want to be really um mindful of all of the complexities in serving students with special needs at such young ages. And um and facilities are are uh in question, um services are in question. Uh and high-quality services uh would be something that we want to make sure that that gets um passed on. So that's something um really, really important to highlight. Yes, Judy?
Have they been client of the county services? Or like ever, or have they switched back and forth? Like, you know, some of the districts, not frequently, but over the decades, they've gone in-house, just county.
Right, right.
What about Santa Maria?
Well, as forever as I can think back for sure, uh let me look at Kirsten and see, same, yeah, same, agreed, yeah. Decades, decades.
So they have no idea. But that's why.
Yeah, that was why I was asking.
Do they indicate why?
Um, the indication is to the uh desire to serve their own students as they go, you know, into their their district. So that's the stated um desired reason. Yeah.
I I may have a follow-up to Judy's question, but I'm not quite sure. What was her question?
How long have we served um Santa, the for the preschool programs for Santa Maria Benita? In fact, it's a regional program, I'll say, that uh so we're serving Orchid students as well as Santa Maria Benita students in our special education preschool programs.
So my understanding is for preschool as well as special ed, a district can come to us and say, we don't feel like we have the capacity to run this program. We'd like for the county to run it. Is there a scenario in which we could say, no, we're not interested in doing it? It's on you. You need to go figure it out?
It it is. It's a, it's a request that really needs to be, we have to make sure that we have the staffing for, that we have the facilities for, that we have the capacity for. So it really is a request that we could consider.
And so if we said no, uh and they were feeling like they can't do it, I mean, is there some scenario in which we end up in a standoff? Or if we say no, they don't have, they don't have an option. They need to go figure it out. Is that?
Oh, so in this case, what you're asking is if we were requested to take on a program.
Right.
If we said no, um yeah, we would, we would sit down and see what other options there that existed.
Here's what I'm trying to get to, Susan. I mean, I appreciate and I, I think it's appropriate that we want to make sure that kids be inserted.
That's right.
But I could also see a scenario, and maybe it's a little bit of like Judy's question. Uh if a district, if if we've been providing those services and the district says, you know, we want to do it for whatever reasons. And then a year from now, they come back and go, yeah, you know what? We can't really do this. We have hired people, fired people, all kinds of stuff. So are we in a position where we can say, look, we're happy to take it on? But if you sign on with us, you need to stay for a period of time.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, the SELPA JP, the SELPA Special Education Local Plan Agency, which is a separate agency from ours, has their timelines and rules. All of that is bound by the SELPA rules. And they really are meant to give us a a due process and due notice and vice versa.
Okay.
Um back to this, and I, and I want to make sure that we're not speaking about it too far because it's not agendized either, but I just will make a comment to say that um the Santa Maria Benita would need to um create a solid plan for this takeback by November of this year. And then the SELPA JPA Board would need to vote on it um in January of next year before that 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 takeback would happen in July of the following year. So there are some timelines that, yes, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, sure, Nadra.
So um thank you for that. I actually had a couple of questions and I had a follow-up to the session.
Thank you. Um I have a few questions. Um as following up, um uh to board member Walker's question about the 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 timeline we mentioned. So if there were a scenario where they had a process and they went to SELPA for it to be um voted on, is there, um could it happen where SELPA would vote, no, you cannot?
Yes.
Is that an, is that something that?
Absolutely, they could do, yes.
Okay, and then is there um any kind of standardized process that you know, that is known that Santa Maria, you know, Benita will use um to create their transition plan?
Yes, yes, they, I will say that there's ed ed code around um transition plans in including how employees would be hired in on by a district if they were taking, requesting a takeback. Um but they're also going to be meeting with Kirsten and the SELPA Executive Director and the incoming Executive Director with the Santa Maria Benita Director. So that meeting is happening in just a couple of weeks, two weeks or so. So we'll learn more. There's also a scenario where it might not be a complete takeback at some point. It could be um, you know, something that happens over, yet gradual over time, phased in or not at all. Their, their letter was absolutely appropriate in that they were saying, we would like to provide this year and a day notice with the expectation that we're, we're going to see if it's even feasible. Yeah, but um but it's such a big um program of our organization affecting so many students, families and staff that I wanted to notify you of it now in case you heard of it down the road. Yeah, thank you.
And I have, sorry, two more quick ones. Um so right now, um according to your report, we serve about seven hundred and fifty-nine students as of the end of May. How would that number change? If, and you may have said this already, so I apologize if you've said that. How would that number change approximately one if they were to take their, their students and we would no longer serve those students?
Yeah. I, I would like to come back to that with the, with the number, but I will say it will depend. It'll depend on, um because a portion of that, those, that number are Orchid students that we would continue to serve. But the majority of that number are Santa Maria Benita students.
Okay.
Um another reason why I, I wouldn't be able to say it's, well, first of all, they're always, they're always little ones coming into the program and the number is very dynamic. But um a another component is that um Santa Maria Benita is hoping to serve their four-year-olds in their TK program. Four-year-olds are currently served in our, our regional preschool program. So that's a section of the pie in terms of the numbers. And then the uh remaining youngsters um who would be preschool only. Um if, if Santa Maria Benita wanted to serve the preschool special education students alongside general education preschool students. Currently, right now, Santa Maria Benita does not serve general education preschool students. So there's a lot of different layers to this program request takeback, of which, that's why I'm, I'm not able to say exactly, but I'd say a majority of the number.
And um this is for later, but just would want to know as we have more um understanding about what's going on, how that affects our budget.
Yes, absolutely, right. And Sarah Reed.
Uh I just wanted to share, uh since I was kind of on the other side of things when Paul moved, so those took that over. I was a part of that boat. Um so we did have a hearing, but you, we were very up to date on the district level of what was happening, what the interest was, what the concerns were in the community, what the concerns were in our district. And people were addressing those one by one and trying to give that confidence to the community that it was something that could be taken over and it was something that we could manage. Um so uh I just wanted to let you know, being on that other side, that the gravity is definitely there.
Yeah, thanks so much for bringing that forward, um Sarah. And I will say a, a um how long, when, Lomp for Lompoc, when we served preschool students in the Lompoc School District, they were all on Lompoc's campuses already. They already had the spaces. We were simply serving in those spaces. In this case, some are in Santa Maria Benita, but the majority are actually not housed at the San, in Santa Maria Benita sites currently, so a difference. So thank you for your good questions because it sounds like it was a good highlight to share. I will do just a couple more, which is um after uh a board member Walker mentioned the Chumash Museum last month. Um I, I visited, um Anna and Arlene and I took a quick visit to the Chumash Museum. Number one, it is phenomenal, tremendous, exceptional, outstanding, all of those words. It's just really amazing. Number two, we were looking at it to see, hmm, might we have a board meeting there? Uh might we host that? So um board member Walker and I are working on that for a potential board meeting in the future. Um potential fall or winter, we'll, we'll give you updates there, but it is truly exceptional that way. The superintendents, the twenty superintendents, we, we do have an annual retreat and um we will be meeting there um this, this fall. And so that, that's been secured already. So really exciting and I it is right across from the Chumash Hotel and yes, right across the street. Yeah, it's really tremendous. And then finally, um wanted to say that, you know, we've, we've had some comments, um public comments in the last couple of months. And just wanted to let the board know um that input related to procurement, input related to fiscal accountability, responsibility and transparency are all really important. Important to me, um important to you. Um I take that as an opportunity to look at our uh operations and ensure that we're meeting the letter of the law. So I, I just say to you, I, I welcome the input. I welcome input from current staff, former staff, public members, anyone who wants to ask a question or um challenge is, is totally welcomed. And because my, my point of view and our team is to say, is there something that we could be doing better? Is there something that we didn't do correctly? Could we, could we, could we write that? So I, I share that with you because although um uh most of the comments, I think, have been personnel-related or day-to-day operational-related, which are really under my, my pur, my purview to do um at, at the shop. I also don't want to prevent anyone from making comments to the board, you know, sharing with the board. But I, I just want you to know that I'm addressing these, um these very thing, these very items. Um it's really important to me. And we also want to be, get better as an organization. So there's absolutely um no reason for me to say, nope, I don't want to, you know, let's shut this down. It's actually more like, tell us what else we need to know. So I hope that helps you as you're listening to these comments too. And I, I welcome any feedback that you have, any input from anyone. Um this is an off, we, we really strive to have continuous improvement. And the only way you can do it is to listen and get better and better as we go. So I, I think I'll leave that there and pass it back on to um Madam President.
Thank you very much. Um let's go to the consent agenda, which contains, as always, the minutes of the meeting for May. Uh temporary county uh certificates issued, donations surplus. Do I have a motion approved?
I'll move.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And that action carries, and that brings us to item seventeen. The recommended approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five school plan for student achievement for JCC. Superintendent does do all, these are annual plans developed and reviewed by the site council and are strategic in consolidating school-level planning efforts, programs funded through consolidated application while maximizing resources, minimizing duplication with the goals to increase student achievement. Do we need a report on that from Renee Wheeler? Are there any questions we could address to Renee? She's in-house.
We're here if you have questions, though.
We have a motion on that.
I so move.
Thank you, Vito.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nadra. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close that motion carries. Item eighteen is the recommended approval of a grant application from those consolidate app, consolidated programs. Um California Department of Ed. Any questions on that? I think we could direct to Susan, otherwise.
I would love to hear a little bit more about what the uh, what the grand house.
Excellent. The con, the consolidated.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
So this is an annual application uh for federal dollars. So this covers Title One, Part A, Part D, Title One, Part D, which is for neglected students specifically to our juvenile court schools. And Title Two, funding that supports teacher development. And title two, funding that supports teacher development. So these are federal dollars. As part of that process, you have to fill out an annual application. And then throughout the year, report on your expenditures for those funds.
So it's federal dollars where we apply through the state and then it's.
We apply through the, yeah, the consolidated application and then we're allocated those funds based on and our numbers of enrollment and so forth.
And so even though we're applying for it, just sort of given the atmosphere, are we anticipating?
That's a better question, right? So I recently reviewed the federal proposal, budget proposal. The last review that I did, and this was, I will say a couple of weeks back, so I'm not sure what's in the, I'm going to say OBB because I, because I don't know what all of those, what it stands for. What that was indicating was that title two and title one, part D would be eliminated. There would still be funds allocated for title one, part A. In previous years, we have not applied for part A because we received part D. So this year we are applying for part A in the event that D and part, title two, part A are eliminated. What they were supposed to be rolled into a state kind of consolidated grant that would be provided to the states. But I'm not really sure if that will happen or what that will mean for those particular funds.
So what I think are yes, we should move forward on it. We're going to apply. We may or may not get the money.
Correct.
And how much money are we talking?
It depends on which category you're talking about.
For, for everything that we're applying, I'm not sure.
Well, I've never, we've never received title one, part A. So I'm going to give you an estimate on. Typically, we receive about, let's say $250,000. I'm going to look for Renee. That's about right. And if we get part A, it could be an additional 50 to $100,000. So not significant, but still does fund some, some staffing costs and professional development.
Thank you.
Yep.
Real motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Item 19 is another federal funding question. It's the 2324 Forest Reserve Fund apportionment. Any questions on that? Do, do you need to, a little refresher on what that is? Okay. In that case, need a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Sarah. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. Item number 20, the recommended approval of the use of the 2526 Prop 30 Education Protection Account revenues. Any questions on that one?
Sure.
It's a mouthful. Specific question or more of a explanation?
Okay, so it was, yeah. So back in 2012, it was just legislation passed to provide a differential, differential for tax increases to further support education. It's intended specifically for classroom use and not administrative costs. So it's not a large amount. And then be assigned with your approval, what that cost would be each year.
The amount here is 7,872. Yeah, thank you.
And those biggest funds go to the Dos Pueblo Juvenile Court School?
Salaries, yes.
Salaries, yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Judy, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, you might need to stick around. Item number 21. Again, recommended approval of the 2425 Proposition 28 Arts and Music in Schools Funding Annual Report. Want to describe what that is?
Yeah, so Prop 28 funding was set aside for staffing for arts and music in, in schools. We did apply for a waiver, given the size, to be able to actually afford with the funding that we receive a position. And so as part of that, we didn't have any expenditures this year. I think the plan is to work with Children's Creative Project to come up with some portion of a position or some contracted our staff that we can have for our programs.
That explains why it's a lot of. Great. Thank you, Steve. Do you have a motion? Thank you, Guy.
I second.
We have a lot of seconds and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, none of them.
Those you don't know, I love music.
Yeah.
Easy yes, wasn't it?
Yes, yes.
Can we get two of those?
Double the fun.
Item 22, recommended authorization to utilize an omnia partners contract. That is purchasing contracts established using product services prices from existing competitively assessed and cost compared multiple award. Sounds like a mark. Steve can talk about it.
Yeah. So this, what this allows us to do, it's the same process of competitive bidding, except it's been done for us. So we can piggyback essentially off of this contract. And this one is specifically with Hawn and specifically for furniture and furniture installation. So it allows us to exceed the bid limit and utilize this particular contract as already having been formally bid.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Steve on that one? Okay, need a motion? Thank you, Judy. A second?
Sure.
Thank you, Guy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? And that motion carries. Item 23 is for information purposes only on the personnel report. And that brings us to, I've closed our open session. And I invite everybody to take a break while we have our closed session.